Justice Farrow.
Okay. Our first order of business is public comment. Seeing none.
Great meeting.
We're going to take recognition out of order. This is Stan Lempert's last meeting tonight, and we wanted to have a recognition of Stan and his nine years of service to North Andover in the school committee. Before we get to the presentation, I'll open up the floor. Mr. McDevitt, do you want to say a couple words?
Yeah. No, I honestly would like to just say thank you. For the minute that I decided to run, I think you were one of the first people who really kind of reached out and started to give me some advice, school me, lecture me, and really help guide me. And so, along with all of your friendship, I've really learned a tremendous amount from you. And when I think about just hearing some of your initial comments when we first started, and I joined five years ago, about, you know, technology and the needs and all of that, and I think to be where we are today is light years ahead. And if anybody kind of held our foot to the fire in terms of trying to do that and keep that pressing and a priority for us, I really think that you've done an amazing job with that. So, thank you.
Ms. Maitland?
Well, I'm very grateful for your leadership and the tutorials you've given me over the last year. I was grateful that you brought the, I think, six binder canvas bag to me, I think, the week after I started. But it was full of really useful information, and I really appreciate your being there for me to help me learn how to be effective member of this committee, and disappointed that won't be a little longer.
I'll miss you too.
Thank you.
Dr. Price?
I was going to ask if Mr. Mealy or Mr. Gilligan wanted to say something in front of me.
Sure. I would say this, that Stan's been a constant for nine years through many superintendents, through the good times and some of the tougher times, and he's been a stabilizing force on this board. And he's always put kids first. He's done a lot to learn about the craft of teaching, and he has not let up his foot on the gas when it comes to pushing the needle in terms of technology and how can we best serve our kids, not only in enhancing the curriculum but also productivity in other ways. And we've been really lucky to have him. I don't know anyone that has attended more meetings than the school committee, but all the boards in town. A member of, you know, working with everything from things that people don't know about, from the Eagle Scouts to, you know, all the organizations. I mean, I see his head just on about every meeting when I turn on Channel 8. So, you don't see that kind of dedication and town service as much anymore, and it's been a remarkable career, and we're really going to miss you, Stan.
Yeah, I'm actually here because of Stan.
It's true.
I'm shaking this away.
We, they came on a site visit to interview our group in Ashawar to determine if they wanted to bring Chris Hoddle in, and when Stan left, he said, "We need to get that business manager or two." And I ended up here. To be piggyback on what Gilligan was saying, the thing that sticks out for me the most is that when I first started here, it was tough times. We were doing cuts, and it was very difficult. But whether they were tough times or have been good times lately, Stan's always the same. You know, he doesn't get too excited, too worked up, let the norm get to be too much. A very steadying force throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say how much I've appreciated getting to know you, Stan, being able to work with you. I know I've only been here a short period of time, but I very much appreciated your representation at the Crest Collaborative and the fact that you really care and think about those students who are at risk, and bring back all of that information and share it with me. It's really important. It truly shows your dedication across the board for all students, so thank you for that.
Thanks.
I wouldn't have been here either without you. You know, so many districts chose to hire these high-crew consultants, and North Andover made a much better decision to put you in charge.
And the way you orchestrated the hiring process is one of the reasons I came here. I mean, you met me, you utilized Jimmy Marini to have a little conversation with me, which was very, very smart of you. You were honest with me from the get-go when you came down to visit in Newton North with Mr. Mealy. It was a wonderful, and Mr. McDevitt, it was a wonderful experience. And then the best part about you is you've just been so honest with me, and I just appreciate that. You know, you leaned over to me last night at the board's selectmen meeting and said, "I'm going to miss you," and "I'm going to miss you too."
I feel like I've known Stan for a long time. We've both been in public service for a long, long time, and I've always appreciated your dedicated service to this town. Someone made reference, I think it was Gilligan made reference, to all the meetings you go to, and I'm sure you're going to continue to go to them. But I just think it just goes to, you know, how much you really care about the town. It's not just the schools to you. You're involved with the historical society and, you know, going to the FinCon meetings, everything. You know, when I got on the board, we got off to a little bit of a rocky start, there's no question about that, but I've grown to appreciate not only you're caring for the schools, but the institutional knowledge that you've brought, kind of like the eminent historian of a board. And I do truly appreciate the vote you gave in become chair last year. I've enjoyed being the chair of this committee, and it's been a real honor and pleasure to serve, and I really owe that to you. So, with that being said, I have, we have a proclamation.
A plaque.
There you go. I'm used to the proclamation thing.
Yeah, I know.
The North Andover Public Schools presents to Stan Lempert in recognition of your outstanding performance as a member of the North Andover School Committee from 2008 to 2017. Thank you very much, Stan. I don't need to tell you to say a few words.
That was one of the first thoughts that came to mind as I'm thinking, so now I'm going to be on the other side, right?
I wrote down my note to you, actually.
Yeah, and Mr. Tracy will say, you know, "We have a three-minute rule here for public, for any comments," right? So, I'll be at a disadvantage. Although, I will say, Mr. Santilli has set a strong precedent on that side. He's had whole months where I couldn't participate in public comment. He cut me off for an entire month once, so, just saying. You know, people are on the same page half the time as you are, right?
Did it work?
Yeah, it did, actually. I did, actually. I, yeah, I just wanted to see if I could do that. Yeah, yeah, see if you could make that stick again. Well, I, this has been a really long and interesting journey for me. This all came about because I volunteered to work with Chris Allen on a subcommittee to do a facility study in 2007, and I got to know the people who were on the committee at the time, and the administration there, and Dr. Marini, and all of that. And I said, gee, these seem like some really good people, and they seem to be trying to do some good stuff here. And so, when Chris started to twist my arm about trying to get on the committee, I said, "Sure, what the heck, let's give that a try." And sort of the rest has been kind of history. At the time, if I would have thought a little bit more about it, I might have made a different decision, because we were kind of, kind of at the, just coming out of the bottom where we had been. You know, it wasn't too many years prior to me coming on that we'd had to fire a superintendent, and we had had to lay off a bunch of teachers, and the budget was just in the wastebasket. So, it was tough times, but we were starting to rebuild. And I think, you know, I've had the pleasure of serving with four superintendents and 11 different school committee members, and the superintendents, each of those superintendents that I've served with have made a unique and, I think, very positive contribution to our district. I think, you know, Jim Marini sort of started us off with a much better attitude, really sort of got us to start to believe in ourselves again. Chris Hoddle was one who really emphasized not only process and procedure but data, and he got us started down that data path in a big way, and I think that was valuable. I think Dr. Hutchinson really helped in terms of some of the personnel issues and personnel decisions that he ended up making that put some key people in some key places, and I think we're still benefiting from that. You know, the amazing Mr. Grant would be one example of that. And I think each of those people have made contributions. The same would be, I would have to say the same would be true of a number of the school committee people that I've served with, too. Each made their own contribution, so I really valued that, and it's been a good learning experience for me. It hasn't all been up, it hasn't all been up. We've had some, a little bit more challenging situations than we would have liked, as Mr. McDevitt can attest. You know, we've had, you know, 100 people in a school committee meeting with figuratively pitchforks and torches. Asking us to revisit a decision we made and suggesting that maybe we could think about it a little differently. But I think in the main, although that turned out okay. We made it through all of those situations, even though it seemed kind of dicey at the time, and that was not a bad thing. I guess if I, when thinking about this, I was going to try to think about what my, what I would consider my accomplishments, having served on the committee for nine years. First and foremost, I'd like to think that I was able to help with communication. And so, you know, as much as I've gotten the sort of an interesting reputation showing up for too many meetings, that's part of the communication effort, right? I mean, for people to get to know you is the first step in being able to communicate. If they don't know who you are and you never show up, you have no idea what you're all about, it's hard to establish any kind of a, you know, a discussion, a dialogue with them. And so, that was part of that process, and I'd like to think that that's worked pretty successfully. Certainly not just due to things that I've done. Everybody's been working on that, and we've all been working on communication, and Jim Marini started the meetings with the town manager at the time, which we've continued to this day. And so, there are a lot of people who've contributed to that, but I've, I'd like to think that I've made a real effort to make that happen. So, I think that's been important, and, you know, I don't mind taking a little flack for that if it works out okay in the end. And the other thing is, you know, two out of three of our, two out of three of our last three superintendents, I was the leader of the search committees. We ended up with Christopher Hoddle and you, Dr. Price, and I'm very, very proud of that, those outcomes. So, that was a good process, particularly this last one. I think that that whole process went well. And the one thing you didn't mention was Jim Marini, yes, but also Mr. Mailer, sending him on the mission. So, I'd say, all in all, that worked out pretty well. The other thing, too, that I'm real pleased about, although I really can't take as much credit as I would like, is the amount of progress we've made on budget and financial transparency in the time I've served on this committee. I mean, we started out, it wasn't anything like that when we started this, and really I think most of the credit should go to Jim on that. But, you know, I think it was us continuing to, you know, push, to want to do the right thing and have information that the, you know, the public, the community could look at and really know what we're all about. And, you know, early on, when I was on the committee, people were always talking about, "Well, just cut the fat out of central office or something, that'll solve our budget problem." And I think they finally got over that once we started to give them the information they could look at themselves, so that they could look. And we kept saying, "Here it is, show us the fat, and we'll cut it out." You know, we're good. So, I feel, I feel good about that, and I, you know, I'd certainly love to take credit for Mr. Mealy having joined the district. I can't really do that, but, you know, he's been a real, you know, a real asset to all of us for this time, so. But now, you know, we've made so much progress, there's so much good going on now, I feel really good about where we're at. You know, we have this wonderful superintendent, you're hiring staff, we're bringing you on staff, we have wonderful people now working in central office. Hopefully, we'll have a new principal at our high school that will, you know, start us off in a new direction there. So, all of that's going really well. You know, you, in particular, have helped us move in a much better direction for curriculum. We have some exciting programs that we're doing and really starting to show results. As Mr. McDevitt pointed out, you know, we've made such dramatic strides in technology. I wish, again, I wish I could take credit for that. You know, I struggled for most of my, you know, tenure here trying to make that happen, and I didn't succeed, and others did, but we've gotten there, so I'm very pleased with that. And along the way, we've added a few buildings to our, you know, our campus, a gymnasium and some modulators across the street, the early childhood center, and, you know, we'll be adding more. So, that's all great, and I think that's gone well, and we're in pretty good shape. So, I guess the one thing that I didn't realize when I started this whole activity that would be a real positive outcome is it's helped me get to meet all kinds of people in North Andover I never would have probably run across, you know, in all kinds of different areas. Town government, town departments, just all kinds of organizations in North Andover that I just never would have gotten to talk to, and places I've been able to go, and people that now, at least I feel like are friendly acquaintances. That's been a very pleasant and positive outcome of this whole activity. So, you know, that's been a good thing. I have to thank my family, of course, you know? They've put up with a lot, and they've held signs a few times, and they've, you know, done without me for any number of meetings, right? So, you know, my wife Mary Ann, my daughter Allison, my son Paul and his wife Angela, gratefully, on their behalf, they haven't had to attend a lot of these meetings and watch us make sausage or see paint dry or whatever we do here, so. So, I, you know, but I appreciate them coming tonight and sharing this last meeting with me. And just a quick shout-out to the people who helped me actually get elected to office a few times, Liz Weber, Earl Svensson, Helen Picard, and Mark Svensson, all of whom helped at one point or another with campaigns of mine. And in addition to Jim, I would also, as you might appreciate, Jen, a shout-out to Bev Zegari, who, I knew we'd made the best, the right pick with you when you realized probably on about day one that she was the most important person in the district. And if she was doing the right thing and she had your back, then you were good, so. That was good. I guess I would just say, I really have appreciated this opportunity that the community, the voters have given me to serve on the school committee. It's been a real, real enjoyable experience, I think a very beneficial experience for me. And I think I've probably gotten more out of it than I may have contributed, but that's, we'll, we'll at time determine that. And I just want to say how grateful I am to live in this wonderful community. So, at the end, I would only say, first, I believe this is the golden age of North Andover, and it was all working when I left.
You're going on top, no question about it.
If there's no objection from the members, I would be honored to pass this to you so you could chair the last committee. Your last, your last meeting.
Actually, I want you to do that, because I like that. You do it.
No?
No, I want you to do it. I really do.
I really?
I, no, 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 you do it. I want you to do it. I feel more comfortable having you be the chair for the last one, so I can just sit here and enjoy.
Well...
I don't want to have to do any work.
Okay. Well, not tonight, it's a very light agenda. See, we planned a light agenda for you to chair it.
Yeah, I know. So, you know, there you go.
Laughing about this, I know.
So, now, with your indulgence, though?
Yeah, please, we'll indulge. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, sure.
Here we go.
So, if someone, the superintendent...
I got it. It'll appear all over if I take a picture.
One more time, and then you guys can go home or have dinner or whatever.
Thank you. Okay, if you insist, Mr. Lempert, I will chair the meeting. And our next item of business is our student report. And again, Courtney's here.
Girls, I apologize on his behalf, he's getting SAT tutoring, so. We're rolling into the third trimester, not to mention this will be my last trimester ever. And basically, the sophomores took their MCAS, I'm pretty sure they finished today. Also, some events that are coming up, the band and chorus kids are going to LA tomorrow morning. Because they won gold last year, they're come, they got welcomed back to have a showcase. And the chorus is also going to MICA, I think that's how you pronounce it, around, like, in a few weeks or something, and they're going to be competing then. The Asian Culture Club is holding a cultural dinner night, April 6, 5:30 to 7:00 PM, and the tickets go for $7 for adults, $5 for students and senior citizens. Children under five are free, and children over five pay the same price as the students. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. Oh, also, Michael Verbal, congratulations to him, he won Mr. North Andover.
Right, that's right. Good, excellent. Any questions for Courtney tonight?
Nope.
Courtney, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. First order of business is approval of minutes from March 9, 2017. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved, so moved. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I'm assuming if you don't reach here, you're going to make a bunch of motions tonight.
Sorry, sorry. I'll second that.
Motion made by...
You have to read my script here, right?
I know, seriously. Motion made by Mr. Lempert, seconded by Mr. McDevitt to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's a 4-0 vote. Okay. Next order of business is to accept the donation of a buddy bench to the Sargent Elementary School.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lempert, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Discussion, can you fill us in a little bit for the public? I could see it here, but the public can't see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Sargent is one of the few schools left that doesn't have a buddy bench, so it was felt this would be a great move, and Nicholas Foundation has been so supportive of our schools, and this is in honor of heart, what? The Big Heart Foundation, I'm sorry, I can't see that, and Nicholas Roberts, right? So, and so, there we, thank you very much.
Okay, that's great. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, it's a 4-0 vote as well. Okay, chairs report, real quick. Last night, myself, Dr. Price, and esteemed vice chair, Lempert, were at the board's selectmen's meeting last night where they voted favorably to support the SOI, the statement of interest for looking at the middle school. I want to give a particular shout-out to Ms. Medley, who, as Mr. McDevitt can attest, had to read a very long motion. She got through it, but it was overwhelmingly endorsed by the board, and we're appreciative of that, and we'll get that out in the next week or two.
By April 7.
By April 7, by April 7. And while I'm saying that, it was also, it was Selwyn Watson's last meeting last night as well, and we bid her the best. She's served our town well as well. Okay, a couple of quick other updates, not updates, announcements. This Sunday, March 26, is the town hall open house. Obviously, we had a major renovation there, so from 1 to 3 on Sunday, if people are around, they're going to have an open house there. And lastly, just a reminder that very important day is next Tuesday, election day in town. Five candidates for selectmen, four for school committee, probably the most contested election I've seen in a long time in this town, so it's really good to see people want to continue in the, in public service. So, that's obviously Tuesday, 7:00, 8:00 PM at the high school, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the high school. And that's about it for me.
A few things. The Relay for Life was incredibly successful last weekend, we had $46,000. I thought we could bring the students here sometime in April to recognize them, but just wanted to say that. We have launched a new program with Fit Money for our fourth graders. We've actually partnered with LOL5, and it's great. We're doing student banking where kids can open a bank account, and they actually come and pick up the money and bring the receipts back, and so it's really exciting. A real bank account, a savings account, and they come to the school and pick up the money and then take it back and then bring back their deposit slips. So, this is part of our whole financial literacy program, and child savings accounts is a real important part of teaching kids to be thoughtful about savings. So, it's exciting new development. Thank you for your support, Mr. McDevitt, of helping us find a bank partner.
They're not riding with the money, I'm just kidding, it's a small...
No, they are not, they are not.
It's not an armored truck.
No, yeah. Well, you know, it's dollar bills and quarters mostly, but, you know, the research is really clear, if kids can start to save at such a young age, even if it's a small amount, it's just so important, and they've just been great partners. And, you know, the fact that they go to the school and pick up the money, it's a neat, it's a neat program, so, so I want to let you know about that. Mr. Mealy and I, next Thursday, will be interviewing four finalists for the OPM, for the elementary school complex expansion, the kindergarten building. So, we have gone through the proposal process, and we are down to four different companies, and we're really moving on the OPM. So, I just wanted to let folks know that's moving quickly. And then the last thing is, I sent a letter out to all the high school and middle school parents last night, but just for anyone out there watching, we have three finalists for our high school position, our high school principal position. They will be available to the community. I invite any of you and also the parents to come and meet next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday morning from 7:45 to 9:00 AM. On Monday, Mr. Peter Cushing, who, yes, is the nephew of another principal in the district, I told our current principal that that might be a strike against him, but, you know. He is currently the principal of the Narragansett Middle School in Templeton, Mass. Prior to that, he was the vice principal of the Narragansett Regional High School. He was a high school teacher in both Arlington and Lynn, and he will be on Monday. On Tuesday, our own Chet Jackson, who's been an assistant principal at North Andover High School for 10 years, nine years, and prior to becoming that, he was a math instructor at Greater Lawrence. He will be on Tuesday. And then the final candidate is Andrew Wolfe, who is currently the administrator of teaching and learning at Salem High School, and prior to that, he spent his entire career in Salem, and he was a housemaster for the freshman house and then a diversion in mainstream housemasters. So, I want to thank the selection committee. Mr. Lempert, you were on that. Anything to say about that? That was a good process?
No, I thought it went well. I think Mr. Mealy, who was the chair of the committee, did an excellent job sort of getting us organized and pointing us in the right direction, and I think, I'm in the end, I hope you feel we moved forward. Some good candidates, we feel good about those, so I think that's good.
Yeah. And just so the community knows, at these events, I ask for feedback from folks. So, this is, you know, ultimately, under ed reform, this is the superintendent's decision, yet I think it's incredibly important that we get tons of community feedback. So, I just do encourage people to engage in this process. I hope to have a decision soon after, but I would hate to lock myself into a date, so.
Okay, Price. Moving on to business, second reading, approval of FY18 revolving accounts. Mr. Mealy?
So, there are no changes to what you have to approve, but I did ask what the town finance director, Lynn Savage, about other revolving accounts, and she said, "No, but it wouldn't hurt. We don't have to." So, I have added them at the end, if you noticed in the packet, the last three. The Model Classroom is the account we've been using to bring in donations and pay from the account using those funds. The E-Rate is another one, that's actually been in place for a while, the money we get for technology, the reimbursement we get through the program. It's been going down each year, but it's still about $30,000 to $35,000 a year, and it gets put back into technology, the paying for telephone, which they're really moving away from to and moving towards more of the delivery of internet and those kind of services. And then the last one is the student exchange we've talked about, where we have students coming to North Andover from other countries, paying us a fee, and that money goes into this account this past year. The expense you see was what was spent to send Mr. Gilligan and I to China to gain even more support and possibly more students coming over, but that's the account we use for those. And then I had a request from a certain school committee member to show the grants, and since it was his last meeting, I couldn't say no.
I'm sure he's watching right now.
So, these do not have to be approved, but for information purposes, you can see the varied grants in the district. And one thing I did find interesting putting it together is that we do get new grants, not a lot of money, but you can see Cheryl Barzak got a new grant that she's able to use. There's a humanities grant, Massachusetts Humanities, yet we got $3,000 this year to use. And secondary transition, we got $14,000, which is a very nice one to get. So, we do get them, and, you know, we're always looking, but it's just not a lot out there. So, you can see the other grants that we have, and as a three-year look, it's the actuals from '15 and '16, and this year, what was budgeted, obviously, we're still in the process of spending those.
I will tell you, the Title 2A in President of the United States budget has been completely eliminated. Not that it will pass, but that has been communicated to us. And Title 1 has been...
They're looking at both.
Yeah, but Title 2A is, his proposal is to completely eliminate it.
So, we need a motion to approve the revolving accounts as presented.
So, second. Motion made by Mr. Lempert, seconded by Mr. McDevitt to approve the FY18 revolving accounts. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's a 4-0 vote as well.
Mr. Millie, I appreciate you giving us these reports, you know, this is a discussion we've had, you know, the 2A, or the Title 1 thing. You know, we've always assumed that would just go on, but we've now found out that that's not necessarily always the case, so, you know, we've always had that discussion, what happens if we, Title 1 gets cut by half, or, you know, you know, what's the impact? We need to be thinking about that, just, so this is good, this is, I think, great information to start that thought process.
And as you see, we didn't miss the kindergarten grant, and had to make it up in this year's budget, so that's why we're.
Right, right. Well, these would be much more devastating if.
Yeah.
Title 1 especially.
I'm spoiling the crap.
Yeah.
And Title 1, tens of years, we're, we're dipped below the poverty level of the 5% threshold. We've seen swings of 200,000, but have we lost, you know, all of Title 1, and there's talk of that becoming a total block grant with other grants. It would hurt, it pays for two full-time reading specialists, one at Thompson, one at Atkinson, and reading support for the middle school, for kids who qualify and need that support.
Under the current situation, though, for next year, we are above the threshold, so we would anticipate a similar funding if the current situation stays the same, which, you know, it's anyone's guess at this point.
Okay. Mr. Millie, FY18 budget status update?
Yep, so, as far as most of the budget goes, we're tracking right where we would anticipate for this time of year. The only real change comes in the out-of-district and the unanticipated expenses, and this is a different kind of unanticipated expense, in that we received late bills from our out-of-district vendors. We do, at the end of the year, as we close out, send constant reminders to our vendors to ask them to send us the final billing, so we can close out the POs. And at the, if you recall a town meeting, you'll see a warrant that pays for prior year bills or invoices. We've been doing a pretty good job in the last few years, but in particular, one vendor gave us invoices of over $45,000 late. Now, they don't get paid until town meeting, they get approved, and so it goes a long time for them, but it's hard for us, because obviously, we've already anticipated not having to spend that money. It's kind of a catch-22, too, because what, what you should be doing is encumbering, if you think you know that the bills are out there, and they just don't know them, although that's hard to understand how that can happen. But the catch is that what you should do is encumber the funds. But if you encumber the funds and they're right and you're wrong, then that money goes to the bottom line, instead of being available to do prepay for special education tuition.
So, it's free cash.
So, it would go into free cash, and we wouldn't be, we would actually lose it in that situation, so it's a fine balance that we have to walk, but in the end, they have to wait until town meeting in order to get paid if they're late with them. So, that's what bumped up from, we were running about 165, we, we had an offset of a reduction in our out-of-district costs, so right now, we are projecting 198, 745 in the unanticipated expenses to tap into the stabilization fund. And the warrant actually is for, I think they're putting in it for 200,000. Yep.
Well, circuit break was just a huge part of that.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Ms. Millie. Any questions on that? No questions, all right. New business, first reading, North Andover High School FY18 overnight trip to France.
Yeah, so this is the trip to France that we approved last year, did not do this year because there were not enough students, so that was when we all started thinking about going to Canada, so just to remind folks of this, this is Chris Carroll taking her French students to, to France. This is the, just as you have seen, a little bit different, but not much different in terms of the application. Students stay with host families there, and this is something that Chris has done for a number of years.
And those are, it's the same school that we trade with.
Yes, with we trade with, yeah.
From here, the fall, okay.
So, we're gonna do this, but then they decided.
They didn't have enough students.
Yeah.
No, this is for next year.
No, next year.
We approved it for this year, it didn't happen. This is our 14th year, school-to-school, community-to-community exchange with the French High School and Lysse School in St. Joseph's. I'm gonna say it wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
And she thinks she'll have enough students.
Yeah, she's very hopeful.
Okay.
It's just, it doesn't make financial sense if we can't get enough kids to go.
Right. What is, what are the terms, or how does it work if parents preliminarily decide, "Yes, my kid's gonna go," and they, they have a change of heart, like, is?
We were able to get the money back. Until you buy the tickets, you're in pretty good shape.
Okay. Right, okay, because I think that's, was one of the reasons this past year, right? That people were just worried about.
Worried about the.
And that may continue.
And I also think, you know, people are anxious about driving to Europe right now.
That's, that's, well, certainly yesterday didn't help, so.
No. Although the year, my first year we were here, you know, we were very thoughtful about the school is not in Paris.
Right.
You know, so there was a lot of thought taken in. However, you're flying in and out of Charles de Gaulle, so.
Right.
Okay, so that's just the first reading, so we have no action on that. No other questions on that? Okay. Moving quickly on to public comment. All right, one at a time.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Don't rush.
I could see that memo about.
Can the camera pan the audience?
Yeah.
Or lack thereof?
Yeah.
Okay, we did the recognition already, so we're good with that.
We're good with that.
And I would now entertain.
Wait.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I apologize.
Date, a little update on just something.
Oh, please, no, no, I'm sorry.
You blew me off last time, too. Just that, just, I'm kidding. The Fields, the Fields Committee has been meeting and having some community meetings that met with the CPC and put forth the desire to get funding for the final design phase of the Fields, and so that'll be coming up, we're waiting to hear what they say to that, but Rick Green made the pitch for the committee on that, and we've been meeting with various community groups so far, with the youth center, I think he met with the Little League, and all the different, it was very similar to what Dr. Price is doing about the kindergarten. And so, that process is going on right now, and they'll be coming here, I think, April 6, yeah, to meet with us.
Okay, we'll maybe we'll save questions, I have some questions for them, but maybe we'll just.
That's fine, just let you know that things are happening, and trying to get a lot of community input about it.
We'll have a packet of presentation that we'll give the review in advance, because I don't want to.
In advance? Yes.
Okay.
There, I, I will make sure, I know that actually, I think, someone, were you the one who was able to get it? We had trouble getting an electronic copy of the big plans, but I think either Andrew Mailer or somebody, I'll make sure that we can get those, because I know he's been coming to meetings with a printout, but you want to be able to look at it in advance.
Right, I mean, I just think that, seeing that, and, you know, there'll be some different questions.
Right.
Time to kind of concentrate on it, as opposed to just kind of first.
First glance, right. Yeah, I will definitely request that. And I know this is, it's a conceptual drawing, number three, we've already tweaked a couple of things that don't, don't show, but we'll be able to discuss that when Rick comes, and the committee comes, but I'll ask for that.
Okay, great. Anything for you, Mr. Devitt?
No, I mean, I was gonna really just commend the students on the Relay for Life, I mean, I think, I think this is the third year?
Second?
Second year? I mean, $46,000 is absolutely fantastic, and as amazing as that is, I mean, to have that level of support from the community, I just think it is unbelievably impressive. Again, you know, I, I do want to thank you, Stan, for, for everything over the past number of years, and really remind people that March 28 is again our election date, and regardless of your political kind of leanings, I mean, I think what, one thing that we have learned and started to understand as a community, and lots of communities have seen this as well, is just the impact at the local level, and how, how it really drives what we do on a daily basis. And so, I really encourage people to do some research. I know that The Eagle and some of the other newspapers have done some candidate spotlights, and so, to take some time to read those, and then vote and be informed.
No one calls it The Eagle, they call it The Trip.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They call it The Eagle.
I have, I should, there's this question, maybe you can answer that. About the, the kindergarten OPMs?
Yes.
When, when do you, when will the school building committee engage in that process? At what point?
We will appoint, I think, by the charter or our policy, we do appoint once town meeting approves the, the, hopefully approves on May 16, so we'd probably appoint SBA after that.
The big work for the OPM prior to that is not inside of the building, none of that, it's really just to go through the processes and try to get some of the committees out of the way, so that when we get to town meeting, if it's approved, we're able to really start focusing on the design. But the idea of bringing somebody on now was so that we could kind of get the team together, get through some of the committees that we have to go to, and then if the town is supportive, really get moving on, so that we can hit the July, August deadline, 2018.
So, my only comment was, sort of, along the lines of citizen involvement, you know, one of the things that we all know makes our public school system really work are volunteers,